Good evening, we'll start the meeting of the city council regular meeting and today is St. Patrick's Day. Please give me... Oh, who's?
Oh, it's me. Councilmember Jennings.
President.
Councilmember Hammond.
Here.
Mayor Proton Cantor.
Here.
Councilmember Barstail.
Mayor Garrett.
Here. I invite everyone to, in the audience and on council, to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before the approval of the agenda, Councilman Barstail is running behind, so just to let everyone know that.
The school will not be in attendance tonight.
So we need to first take a motion for the agenda, then we can take the...
All right.
Pardon me?
I'll make a motion for the agenda to remove the presentation and to table the items related to San Jose, most specifically, where is it, item A and B?
Mayor Proton, I would recommend taking and leaving that item on the agenda, then when it comes to that point, that's when it would be appropriate to motion to table that item.
Oh, right, 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 yeah, I'm not removing it, so, well, could we just remove it from the agenda, because we haven't...
You could remove it, but there might be people here wanting to hear why. Couple guys with shiny badges in particular.
Is there a motion to...
To remove the presentation 5A, and I guess that's it, because we'll table it at the time.
Second. It's been moved to second, is there any further discussion? Harry, now roll call, please.
Mayor Proton Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Barstail.
Mayor Proton Cantor. Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes. Consent agenda is approved, next we'll go to the action request for consideration and approval, the first one is request to approve resolution 2025-04 regarding the temporary opening of San Jose Boulevard, and there is a motion on the floor to...
I think I gotta make it again now.
Table it.
So I'll make a motion to table action request item A, 8A.
Second.
It's been moved to second, I don't think there's a discussion regarding it, and roll call, please.
May, Mayor, before we get to vote, can we please...
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Fire Department up top.
I'm sorry.
So I invited the Fire Department here depending on action, just to kind of go over the requests in general and provide some data for you guys, and after we know what decisions have been made today, but at least get this out there.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Administrator, thanks for having us come back out. So what we're looking at here, the specific area we're talking about is what we refer to as Section 1403, that's roughly the southwest corner of the square mile bordered by Evergreen, 11 Mile, Santa Barbara, and Saratoga. We have identified a potential issue with the 696 project going on, how it's going to restrict our access and flow into that corner of that square mile, and we are concerned about increased response times and difficulties both getting in and getting out of that neighborhood in the event of an emergency. To put some things in perspective for you, as we discussed at the study session, Fire Station number three, which is 12 miles just west of Evergreen, is the closest firehouse to that area. Last, or last two years, we looked at some data for call volume, 135 total runs to that quarter square mile alone, 108 of them were responded to by Fire Station three. Currently, their average response time is eight minutes and 56 seconds, because as it stands, they have to go across 12 Mile roughly to Bloomfield and then start cutting back through the neighborhood, and even though we are in big emergency vehicles with lights and sirens, we still drive slowly in a neighborhood because of kids and other obstacles that we have. We are looking at the potential if San Jose was to provide emergency access only, Google mapping suggests that from the front apron of Fire Station three into the entrance to that quarter square would be three minutes. When you look at what the NFPA, which is National Fire Protection Association, which sets our standards, their first due engine response should be four minutes with an additional 60 to 80 seconds for us to turn out. If we look at currently at eight minutes and 56 seconds, we are not meeting that standard. If we were to open up that avenue and we could access that quarter square mile in three minutes, when you equate the turnout time of us actually receiving the alarm, getting to the trucks, we would then meet that standard for the NFPA. You know, on the fire service, I mentioned it last time, we like to use the phrase if it's predictable, it's preventable. We've already seen congestion on our roadways with the 696 project, we know there's going to be more surface street projects going on as well, which could further restrict our access, and we're just looking at how we can provide good service to that area of your city.
Thank you.
Can I ask, Mike?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I asked this during the study session, but the initial memo that we got from retired chief Medefit on February 25th positioned the request as a request to recommend a temporary opening of San Jose Boulevard because of construction, but it says opening of this route would offer several key benefits to the community, and it focuses on traffic relief for motorist residents and commuters, not the Fire Department. Obviously, there's a residual benefit, safety considerations because of overcrowding and potentially unsafe streets during a construction period, and then this message of public support and convenience, that people have expressed concerns about extended delays due to road closures. I can tell you, in our meetings, nobody's coming here to complain to us about extended delays due to road closures relative to the construction, that they are concerned about cut through traffic by non-emergency vehicles. So I'm just curious about why, it seems like, you know, in your updated memo, the one that we received before this meeting, that Captain Denault wrote on March 13th, the focus is more on the things you just discussed, that, you know, trying to reduce response times and be more aligned with what your standards are, which everybody understands and it makes sense. So I guess my question is, why the change in the tone of the request?
Sure, and unfortunately, I can't speak to what... Those are great questions, unfortunately, I can't speak to the tone when Chief Medefit originally drafted the memo, because obviously, I'm not him. I know his primary focus has always been the safety of the community, and it's us being able to access and stuff like that. I'm sure part of his intent was probably to also include other things that would benefit your residents as well, as far as traffic congestion and things like that, would be what I would assume his intent was for that, for those parts of the memo itself. As far as people, you know, complaining about delayed stuff, I can tell you that that's a very common thing we hear on all our emergency scenes, is it took you forever to get here? You know, when there's an emergency happening, seconds seem like minutes, seem like hours. So I'm sure some of that was probably conveyed to that, along with just regular, you know, he was out in the community talking to folks about, oh, yeah, great, we got another construction season, you know, the, what's the joke, they always say, there's two seasons in Michigan, winter and construction. So I'm sure some of that was, you know, stuff that was conveyed to him on one-on-one conversations with various residents.
Okay. One of the things that we discussed in our study session that we're considering is an opening up of that street, but with some sort of a barricade that could only be accessible by public safety, law enforcement, and Fire Department, probably through like a lockbox or something like that. Current response time is like nine minutes, with that road open, it's somewhere around three minutes, with the gate in the way, it's probably somewhere between three minutes and 30 seconds and four minutes, I'm guessing.
Depends on what the mechanism looks like.
Certainly less than nine.
Yeah, well, we talked about, like, for example, the automatic siren controlled gate, obviously, that hears us as we're coming up, it opens, I get that's expensive. When you talk about a lockbox, it depends on what type of lockbox, if we have to unlock the lockbox to get a key to then open the gate, whether it's keyed on the gate with keys that we have, I mean, there's different options. That was similar to, Mayor Garrett was talking about the barrels, putting construction barrels across, and the question I had was, well, we can move them, but do we have to put them back? Because again, it's all about reducing that delay. I believe then it was discussed that potentially the Police Department, after they responded to the run with us, would go back and replace the barrels, so...
So when you use lockboxes at other locations, we've heard that there are other, like, maybe private, you know, gated communities or things like that, where you need to have lockbox access, or a siren activated gate, but some of them have to be key activated, right? Some of them are.
Correct.
So what happens to replace those currently with those, the ones that already exist?
So typically, the ones that we have with keyed access, if it's a regular driveway in some of our, like, neighborhoods, or what, and I shouldn't say neighborhoods, in some of our apartment complexes, it's an electronic key that when we turn it, it opens a gate, so instead of it being the siren activated one, it still triggers an electronic gate, which after we proceed through, just like a regular vehicle, the gate would close again. Typically, the ones that we would use that have padlocks on them are typically secondary access points, they're not a primary access to a facility, it's a secondary access that if we had a fire and we had hose lines laid out, we couldn't get in the primary entrance anymore, then we would have the time, open a padlock, open the gate, and then at the conclusion of the incident, and we're talking incidents that last hours, as opposed to like a medical emergency, which is a quick in, quick out. So those type of, where it's more of a manual controlled gate, is more of a secondary access to facilities, as opposed to a primary access.
But you don't, you don't have any type of, I guess, standard key, so for example, TSA, you put a lock on your suitcase, they've got a key that can undo it, so it's not like you would have...
Yes, we do, it's actually called the Knox Lock, Knox Box Program, commercial buildings have it, they make a residential one, it's a secured key safe that only the Fire Department has it, in fact, if you order one for your house, we have to come by and open it for you to put your house key inside it. They also make padlocks, so you'd be able to put a padlock on something, some of the facilities I was just mentioning, they have a Knox padlock, where it's a key that's carried on all fire apparatus.
Right, that's what I was asking about.
Yes, yes.
So that way, you run out of the truck, you open the padlock, you're in.
Yeah, and that system is only by the Fire Department, even the Police Department does not have access to those locks.
Yeah, so if we build something like we talked about in the study session, we could put a Knox...
A Knox padlock.
...padlock on it.
That would get ordered by the Knox company through the Fire Department, so it makes sure it comes corded correctly to fit our keys.
Anybody else have any other questions? Thank you. Thank you for coming out, appreciate it. There was a motion on the board, does that need to be reiterated, just...
No, I'll just reiterate, a motion to table item 8, 8, the federal order to 2025-001.
It's been moved to second, is, yeah, there's no discussion, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Barstail's absent. Mayor Proton Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes. Moving on to, did you do AMB or...
AMB, one on C.
Okay, so C, request to approve resolution 2025-05, council rules of order and procedure update.
Yeah, so as discussed during our study session, this is just an update to your guys' standing resolution, which is your council rules and procedures. This update includes video and recording procedures for members of the audience, allowing them to record meetings, but designates certain areas in the meetings and provides additional guidelines for them.
Thank you, have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2025-05, council rules of order and procedure update.
Second. It's been moved to second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I was wondering, for these, are we just gonna put it on the actual agenda, or are we gonna put it online somewhere in the, you know, notes or anything?
So for your guys' full rules and procedure, we can, yeah, we can add that to the website, as you know, the portion on the agenda is a much scaled down version, we can add a very simplified version of that to that, that'd be the easiest way to do that, if not, then your agenda becomes pointless.
We don't move that, okay.
Yeah, some kind of a summary would be helpful for, just to notify people on the city's website.
And then a question regarding recording, so recording devices only going to this square right here?
Yes.
And that's where they have to be left, and there's no more recording anywhere else?
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else? Harry, now, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Barstail's absent. Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to, did you do AMB or...
AMB, one on C.
Okay, so C, request to approve resolution 2025-05, council rules of order and procedure update.
Yeah, so as discussed during our study session, this is just an update to your guys' standing resolution, which is your council rules and procedures. This update includes video and recording procedures for members of the audience, allowing them to record meetings, but designates certain areas in the meetings and provides additional guidelines for them.
Thank you, have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2025-05, council rules of order and procedure update.
Second. It's been moved to second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I was wondering, for these, are we just gonna put it on the actual agenda, or are we gonna put it online somewhere in the, you know, notes or anything?
So for your guys' full rules and procedure, we can, yeah, we can add that to the website, as you know, the portion on the agenda is a much scaled down version, we can add a very simplified version of that to that, that'd be the easiest way to do that, if not, then your agenda becomes pointless.
We don't move that, okay.
Yeah, some kind of a summary would be helpful for, just to notify people on the city's website.
And then a question regarding recording, so recording devices only going to this square right here?
Yes.
And that's where they have to be left, and there's no more recording anywhere else?
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else? Harry, now, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Barstail?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Next, we have the request to approve, oh, sorry, motion carries, request to approve resolution 2025-06, Arbor Day proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor, so to be designated as a tree city, as part of the Arbor Day Foundation, the city has to adopt an Arbor Day proclamation every single year and hold an Arbor Day event. Thanks to us doing this process last year and our Tree Committee's great efforts, we were named a tree city for 2024, so we're looking to continue that process in 2025. So then, proclamation is part of the step for tree city, it also outlines when the Tree Committee will have their Arbor Day event, which will be April 26th.
Thank you. Nancy, would you like to say anything?
Um...
You have to go with your...
Okay, well, what we're doing, which is kind of exciting, we want to make Arbor Day as combined with...
I don't want to waste any time.
Arbor, thanks, Arbor and Earth together, and we wanted, we're working with PNR, the Tree Committee is working with PNR, and we're gonna have prizes and tree plantings and giveaways, and we want to make it into a real big deal for the city where it's gonna be fun, and we want it to be a big event for kids, you know, there's gonna be prizes for kids and games and everything, so, well, we haven't advertised it yet, so when we get that out, but just mark that day, because we want it to be like an annual really cool event for everybody.
That's April 26th?
April 26th, and it's only a couple hours, but it should be a good time.
Well, thank you for everything you do with the nature group and the Tree Committee.
Did we do a motion?
I will make a motion to adopt resolution number 2025-06, Arbor Day proclamation.
Second. It's been moved to second, is there any further discussion? I will say that Nancy and the Tree Committee has really done an outstanding job, yes, they, I'm sorry, you've done a really good job, just the meticulous work that you all have done, and I read all of them, believe it or not.
Thank you.
I'm, thank you for bringing back us into a tree city, and I hate that it was dropped in the first place, but thank you.
But now it's yours.
Exactly, thank you. Anyone else? Harry, now, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Barstail?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes. Motion passes, next we have the request to approve resolution 2025-07, support for the Oakland County Technical Assistance and Project Support Service Grant Application.
Thank you, Mayor, so every single year, the MSOC offers technical assistance and project support grants to their Main Street communities within Oakland County, and as we are partner with Main Street Oakland County, we try to apply for one every single year. After having conversations with Austin and knowing our projects we have upcoming this next year, we would like to apply to this grant to be applied towards our master plan and parks and park plan update that we currently have scheduled for next year pending budget approval. This grant does have a maximum cost of $2,500, so it won't go that far towards the update, but is something that will be helpful, so that's where, and as part of this process, we just need to approve resolution from council to submit an application.
Thank you, who would like to make the motion?
Motion to approve resolution number 2025-07, support for the Oakland County Technical Assistance Project Support Services Grant Application.
Second. It's been moved to second, is there any additional discussion, or is there a discussion?
I just want to thank Mike for all his work that he's been doing on applying for all of these grants, it's great, and hopefully we'll get them all.
I'd say this credit goes definitely to Austin.
And Austin is on time as well, but...
There is no grant size too small.
Right.
And this is specifically coming from Oakland County, we don't have to worry about the state or federal type of grants.
Correct, this is straight through Oakland County Main Street program.
Okay, anyone else? Harry, now, roll call, please.
Councilmember Barstail?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next is request to approve resolution 2025-08, approving a moratorium on money service businesses.
Scott, you on?
Yeah, this is in response to request the last study session, first addressing the money service businesses, which this came up during the study session, it's not defined in the moratorium, but the state of Michigan regulates non-bank financial institutions separately, and they classify them as money service businesses, so the intent here is 180-day moratorium, so that the city planner and myself can present draft ordinance language to the planning commission for consideration, to not only define, but also to impose some reasonable restrictions on this type of use in the city.
Thank you, anyone want to, someone to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2025-08, approving a moratorium on money service businesses.
It's been moved to second, is there any discussion?
I appreciate the opportunity to, you know, impose this kind of temporary and reasonable restriction, and giving the opportunity for the planning commission to really focus on what is appropriate for the city, and, but at the same time, is reasonable and supports the growth and progress of businesses in the city at the same time, so, it'll give us, it'll give the planning commission, which I'm currently on, the time to do that review and come up with suggestions on how to address the challenge.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Barstail?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you again. Next is request to approve resolution 2025-09, approving a moratorium on small box discount retail stores, and if you would give an example of what we're talking about.
So, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, this is same logic as the previous agenda item, the small box discount retail stores, commonly referred Dollar General, Family Dollar, this is something that the city of Southfield recently did, they enacted a moratorium to propose and draft ordinance language that regulates these types of establishments in their city, same motivation as the previous one, that going to give the, myself, the planner, and the planning commission an opportunity to consider some ordinance language that would regulate these types of businesses within the city.
Thank you, who would like to make the motion?
Motion to approve resolution number 2025-09, approving a moratorium on small box discount retail stores.
Second. It's been moved to second, any discussion?
It's been moved to second, is there any discussion? I appreciate the opportunity to, you know, impose this kind of temporary and reasonable restriction, and giving the opportunity for the planning commission to really focus on what is appropriate for the city, and, but at the same time, is reasonable and supports the growth and progress of businesses in the city at the same time, so, it'll give us, it'll give the planning commission, which I'm currently on, the time to do that review and come up with suggestions on how to address the challenge.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Barstail?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you again. Next is request to approve resolution 2025-09, approving a moratorium on small box discount retail stores, and if you would give an example of what we're talking about.
So, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, this is same logic as the previous agenda item, the small box discount retail stores, commonly referred Dollar General, Family Dollar, this is something that the city of Southfield recently did, they enacted a moratorium to propose and draft ordinance language that regulates these types of establishments in their city, same motivation as the previous one, that going to give the, myself, the planner, and the planning commission an opportunity to consider some ordinance language that would regulate these types of businesses within the city.
Thank you, who would like to make the motion?
Motion to approve resolution number 2025-09, approving a moratorium on small box discount retail stores.
Second. It's been moved to second, any discussion? Harry, now, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Barstail?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next we have the request to approve city administrators' compensation increase.
So this is always awkward conversation. But based on my employment contract effort, council does a yearly evaluation, there is consideration for performance increase or performance bonus, so this is council's consideration, here for discussion.
I would like to make a motion to approve a $3,500 salary increase retroactive, sorry, like to approve a $3,500 bonus based on performance targets defined in the city administrators' employment agreement.
Second. It's been moved to second, any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say, I think he deserves every dollar of it, Mike has been great, as I wrote in your evaluation, I mean, I'm just, having been on council for seven years, I'm just thrilled at the performance, the response, the responsiveness, the forethought, you know, a lot of times we come to him with ideas and he's already in the process of implementing them, so, just his proactive nature, I just, I couldn't be happier, so, thank you.
And I concur with the most of that.
Wait, which part of those you mean, throw away?
It's hard for me to say you did so great, because then it's like, what can you achieve more, you know, it's kind of like, I'm that person that never gives 100%, I always give 90, but, my question is, or not question, statement, so it's very, very clear, this is $3,500 bonus, not a salary increase, just to reiterate one more time, that's a $3,500 bonus, as in, one time, it's not going into your salary to be, even though I forgot how much that would be, that would be like a couple of dollars a year, but just to reiterate, you are doing a great job, you did a great cleanup job, I think that you're lucky, and hopefully that you understand that you're still, you're gonna be here for five years or more, that is, that's your limit.
I do want to say that, you know, the city council, when we were discussing the employment agreement, we came up with these three categories, or areas that we wanted you to focus on, and I feel like that worked, you know, budget and finances, it took a lot of work, but those things are in much better shape than they were before you started, city staff, is it completely turned over, and yet, you know, we're fully staffed now, we're in good shape, and you've been part of a lot of community events, you've been responsive to residents, you've been responsive to community members that aren't residents, mostly business owners, but not exclusively business owners, so I just feel like this idea of introducing these performance goals and tying incentive payments to them was a really good idea, and I suggest that we should continue it going forward.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I like everything you do, I've only heard good things about your work, the times where I pop in to ask you and the staff questions, you and staff are always on top of everything, they're always on top of everything, I think it's a testament to how well you manage everything, so, thank you, I think you do a great job.
Thank you.
You're appreciated, you know, you know me, I won't go into depth.
I appreciate, I appreciate you, I appreciate you dropping in and feeling safe to ride with me today. Roll call.
Mayor Proton Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Barstail?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
That's what I was thinking, too. Yes, okay.
Motion carried.
Next, if you want to keep toting on yourself, would you like to do your report?
Nothing, nothing, come on.
Hi, everyone. So, DDA is doing a fundraiser. We are partnering this time with St. Baldrick's Foundation. Today is actually St. Baldrick's 25th anniversary. They are a cancer research foundation that has since 2000 raised $350 million for cancer research worldwide, particularly they focus on childhood cancer research. This is going to be running until the first Friday of May, May 2nd, sorry, and then we're going to have a shave date of May the 6th, which is Tuesday. That's going to be here at noon. You can donate online at stbaldrickssfoundation.org/events/shavetheintern. And there is a point to the title of Shave the Intern, because the highest paying donor, or support, I should say, is going to get the dubious honor of shaving me bald.
Just not the beard.
Not the beard, no. The beard stays, and I have to, I have to make that abundantly clear, the beard stays. However, if you guys are mad enough to get us to the point, if we raise a million dollars, the beard will go. So I will put a price to it. So, I don't want to put that out there. I think that this, we have a $5,000 goal. I think that we can do this as a community. And if there are any residents out there who, or even if your relatives, want to get involved and get shaved with me, by all means, reach out to me. We can set something up. We're working with local area salons and barber shops to get involved as well, and try to have them support us, and so we can support them in a way, give them some publicity at this. So, like I said, this goes for the next about six weeks, and yeah, whoever wants to shave me bald, by all means, go for it. Oh, and Austin has said, even though he's not here, he does want me to let you guys know, first person to donate a thousand dollars gets to shave him bald, too. So, bounty's on his head.
I had a question. A thousand dollars for him?
Oh, that ain't happening. That ain't happening.
We can talk later.
And I, I would raise my hand for that.
I know you would, that's why I said that ain't happening.
And I would be the person that would do it.
Never say die. We can, we can work some out. Everyone's got a price. I put a million dollars on this, you got a price, too. I guarantee it.
I could put a million dollars on that. There you go.
On the St. Baldrick's website, you can actually sign up to actually participate as somebody being shaved.
Yes.
In the event. I thought really long and hard about it.
What stopped you, I wonder?
Not to.
You want to get rid of the beard?
For a thousand dollars, sure.
There you go. And while I'm at it, too, the Downtown Development Authority has also updated our website. We now have a fully fledged map that you can kind of play around with. It has points of active businesses in our community that have updated their business licenses with us. I think there's about 60 right now, but we are obviously adding more as time goes on. I'm going to be updating it as I get new information. So if you do have any, any time, you want to kind of peruse the advancements we've made to our website, feel free to.
How are we doing on, on making sure that all our businesses are licensed? I know that was something.
It's an ongoing process. I think we've made great strides over the past year or so. Naturally, getting mailers out on time, having Steve be active out to the community, Austin and Tom with their engagement. So we made, as I say, pretty good progress. Is it perfect? No, but it's much better than what it was last year.
Good.
Thank you. Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission is meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. On the agenda are, is a review of the Capital Improvement Plan, and scheduling a public hearing for 27700 Southfield Road, which is the school building, and the Cernow Company has indicated that they intend to submit a site plan for the Planning Commission to review in our April meeting. So in our March meeting, we need to set the public hearing to be able to actually do that review, receive public comment, and then ultimately vote on the site plan. So that's happening tomorrow. And then there'll be a review of the existing projects that are already in flight. Austin's been doing a great job of keeping the Planning Commission up to date. On-site plans, we've already approved and are in process, so, and that information's also available on the city website. So if anybody's curious about any developments that you see in the city, if they've been reviewed by the Planning Commission and are being tracked by, by Austin in his role supporting the Planning Commission, you can get that information on the city's website, on the Planning Commission page.
Thank you. Parks and Rec.
Go Parks, go Rec. Food Truck Friday, we have a Food Truck Friday this Friday, March 30, March 21st. Also trivia night, please come out and support both. Come for Food Truck Fridays, stay for trivia. Making Medical Decisions is going on on March 22nd, and Crochet 101 is April 5th at Bigby. Please visit our Parks and Rec's Facebook page, and we have a city page on the city as well.
Yeah.
Come to the Facebook page, and just look at all the stuff that Parks and Rec are doing. They, they work very hard, and they put a lot of things together, a lot more to come as well.
Thank you. Tree Committee. Do you have anything else you want to say?
No.
Okay. Finance Review Committee.
Yeah, so I think as a lot of people are aware, you know, we will most likely have a headly override on the ballot in November, and council is also talking about a Public Act 33, Public Safety Special Assessment, over the next couple of months. So we had a meeting on March 6th to discuss an education plan, with the idea being, the more information we can get out to residents, and more educated we can get on, get them on, on the laws that were under, the financial issues that we have, what it would mean to them, and so forth, the more informed they'll be, so that they can make a good decision that, that fits their particular situation. So we talked about an education plan, we're going to do a multi-faceted plan, we're going to continue doing town halls. We did a town hall on February 11th, I think we had probably about 40 people there. We're going to continue doing town halls up and through the election. The next one is on Tuesday, April 1st, at 7:00 PM in the, in the community room downstairs. And so I encourage you to come to, to, to the plan, to the town hall, to find out more about it.
What's the date again?
April 1st, Tuesday, 7:00 PM. We also started a website, it's, it's online now, our webpage on our website, Mike, Timothy Hellman, sitting there, and Mike, Timothy Hellman, myself, and I worked to put that, put that up, and it contains, contains a lot of information that you can go to and look at at your own pace. There's a FAC, a Frequently Asked Questions document in there, that has 31 commonly asked questions, that you can, you can find out more information. The full-blown recommendation that council, or that the Finance Review Committee gave to council is accessible there. There are multiple videos, so the video of the town hall from February 11th, so if you can't make the one in April, and you want to see the information, you can watch the video. There's also a video out there when the Finance Review Committee presented to council, the recommendation to council, and council peppered them with about an hour's worth of questions, I think, or 45 minutes worth of questions, so that's on there, that's pretty informative. And then there's, there's also some sections in there that, that look, have some lists of things that we've done in the past, so how have we optimized expenses, what expenses, you know, what have we done to reduce expenses, what are the ramifications if a headly override doesn't, doesn't pass, and so on. For those who, who don't get their information online, the FAC document will be available at the front desk, so you can just walk up and grab a copy. We're also, probably closer to the election, we'll do a mailing to homes like we've done in the past, and/or an advertisement. And then the other thing that we're going to do, which worked really well with the 2020 Village Education Plan, is we'll be doing in-home town halls. So basically, where residents get their neighbors, you get 10 to 20 neighbors over, we come in and we do a presentation. We've got 10 of those, 10 volunteers so far, we're looking for more, so if you're interested in volunteering up your home and gathering your neighbors for a discussion, just contact me, and we can get that scheduled, so.
Thank you. Any unfinished new business?
I'm so sorry. I'm sorry. That was a school board.
Last week, the school board, or Southfield Public Schools, had their State of the District. It was very informative. Dr. Green presented on the new things that are happening for Southfield Public Schools. They received a new accreditation from Cognia. Have all the details, but this, I'll just read a little snippet. This achievement reflects SPS's ongoing commitment to excellence in education and dedication to providing a high-quality learning environment. They had all schools there for Southfield Public Schools. They had the Superintendent for Oakland County Public Schools there, and then also some residents who came and took notes, so it was good to see some Letha Village residents there as well. The SPS student reps were not able to attend tonight, but the Chief of Staff does want to possibly come to our next meeting to just touch on the highlights that they discussed. They also had like a rendering of University High School, the, the updated building, so it was a good place to be to see what's possible to come for that school, so, that's all I have to share.
Thank you. Unfinished new business? None. Public comment. Speakers are limited to three minutes, unlike the study session that I've been reprimanded about. It's just conversation where you give your comments, and then you'll get a response during Mayor and Council comments. So if anybody wants to be heard, please come to the microphone, you have a hard three minutes. And you may line up. Give your name, please.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Earlene Rory Williams, and I'm a resident here in Letha Village. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I have two problems that I have with the City of Letha Village. My first problem is, is dealing with my taxes. My taxes are paid to the city from my mortgage company, and I had a problem with, the problem was that the payment was paid, but come to find out, when I went to go to get my paper statement saying about my taxes, I was told from the City of Letha staff that my taxes was not paid, they didn't receive any money for my taxes. Then I got back with my mortgage company, they said, yes, we did. So with that being said, to try to sum it all up, is that I spoke with Mr. Green because the problem was not resolved, basis than me having to pay interest fees, late fees. I presented with Mr. Green, asked them, could I get a statement verifying when my taxes is paid through the City of Letha Village? And he said, no, because that wouldn't mean that it'd be too many receipts going out. But I said, well, no, he said, I'm, excuse me, he said that it would be hundreds receipts going out. I said, well, I'm not hundreds, I'm one person. But when my taxes is paid, I think that to make sure that they're paid, because the problem is that when the mortgage company pay my taxes, it's the city responsibility to accept the payment, but the payment was sent back. So in other words, my payment was sent back, so I did not know my taxes was not paid, because once the money is sent, it indicated with the city that my taxes are paid. So somehow, somebody did something and sent the money back, so that caused my taxes to almost go into default, and it was not recognized. I was not informed until my taxes are due in August, my taxes are due in December. So therefore, that being a problem, I would ask just a simple request that the city could verify in saying, when my taxes is paid, that I receive a statement, because other than that, I won't know that they're exactly paid, if you understand what I'm saying? Because when you're, when you, when the money is sent, it's still not saying my taxes are paid, because somebody made a mistake, like I said, and sent the money back, so that caused my taxes to go into extra interest, and it almost went into default. So I got on the phone and asked the company, my mortgage company, would they go ahead and pay the taxes, which they did, but it's still an issue, because I'm going to fix income. I don't have thousands of dollars.
Thank you.
My second.
Your time is up. Can I have your last name, again?
My name is Earlene Rory Williams.
Okay, your time is up, and then if, everyone that gets to speak, unless you can come back up and speak.
Okay.
If not, can you stay until this is over, so we can all, the three of us can talk?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to be heard?
I realize that Congress only just passed a continuing resolution out this past Friday, so maybe too soon to expect an answer to this, but I had brought up, I think informally with council in the past, asking the council, please get with our congressmen, representatives, and determine any possible impact on our water project north of 11 Mile, and any other projects that are either directly or indirectly federally funded, are those still on? Because I've seen ambiguous statements about this, as to whether all earmarks, you know, which earmarks were not done, okay? Whether it's only 2025, or ones that were approved in 2024. You know, I have heard informal comments from residents saying, oh, you know, we have this, we have the money for the water project in the budget anyway, you know, we're putting money, I don't know how true that is, we're putting money away every year, but I don't think we can wait five years or 10 years. You know, we've just had a series of water main breaks. I don't know what that's costing the city, but it costs more to fix things that break than it does to, to, you know, to do preventative maintenance and upgrading. So I would hope that next month, we might have a report on that, just in terms of, you know, is that project still going forward, and if it isn't, what's our plan?
Thank you.
Other than that, money services, my only, I think I've brought this up before, but maybe not formally in front of council, I would love to see when you consider that, think about, and I want to expand this, to any machine that accepts cash, that can you please study what other cities have done to make sure there is educational material available at that point, and monitoring, whether it's video monitoring, training of store personnel, to try to monitor, you know, people getting scammed and pouring money into machines, okay? And just totally unrelated to this, but if your bank calls you eight times in a row, one right after the other, that is not your bank. There's the, the, the level of this, these scams is just increasing just incredibly. The other thing I wanted to mention, which I mentioned earlier, was residential street traffic. The speeds are getting higher. If you'd ask for feedback, I'll give you that.
Thank you. I'll say the same thing, once everyone is speaking, if you would like to reiterate.
Hi, Lauren Barris. I just want to thank, I want council to know that the Tree Committee donated something like $4,500 of their budget to match that grant, I think, right?
E and R.
Parks and Rec.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that was just like super generous, and I don't know that we've really recognized them. If we have, I've missed it, but I thought that was really cool. They've done a lot of their events, so that they are cost-free, or they pay for themselves, and they were able to give up some of their budget for the trees, so I think that's really cool. Also, we're getting Parks and Rec involved in the Letha Village Music Festival this year for family children's area, and that's been a great experience working with them, and I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. Next?
I'm Diane Anderson, and again, I want to comment that, again, there is no report from the Historic District Commission. They rarely meet, they rarely report, and that's not an accident, because a driving force should be the Historical Society, but that doesn't actually function anymore. My mother was a founding member of that group and a life member, Jewel Anderson. It was open to anyone, anywhere in the world, that had an interest in Letha history. Now, it's a private club, where they vet your membership. And they were to be looking after the streetscape on Southfield Road, those historic buildings from the 50s and 60s that are commercial buildings, along with Letha School, and along with the neighborhood, and that isn't happening. And it really bothers me, this lack of interest in history. It's almost as if, if it's pre 2020, it doesn't count. You talk about the trees, well, there were trees that were planted in the garden in memory of people from the founding generation. The city didn't even water them, and they died. So those people paid again to have those trees put out there, and they died. I hope the current Tree Committee can do something better than that, because those people whose memories were supposed to be commemorated, the people who made the Letha that you all moved to later on, are being dishonored. I mentioned some months ago, a man named Bill Beskey. Bill was the only person in Letha that actually lived in Letha when he served in the Army that was Vietnam. He had a plaque on the wall that was there until last year, and it was shared with a memorial to the son of Chief Tullson, who was our police commissioner who died in Vietnam. I have asked over and over again, why you ripped off the wall, this memorial to Letha's only veteran who served while he lived in Letha. I have had no answer, because I think I know the answer, you threw it in the trash. And you threw it in the trash, because that was pre 2020 Letha history. So I can only say, I've quoted it before, but there's a Maori quote, "You are nothing without your past. To lose your roots is spiritual death." And I fear the lack of any concern for the history of Letha in the 40s, 50s, and 60s, the era when the pioneers came out here and built something, when there was nothing around them, and they created the community that you all chose to move to. I think it's extremely disrespectful, and I think it shows a real lack of concern about the future, when you forget your past.
Thank you. Anyone else want to be heard?
Timothy Hellman, Sam Quentin Boulevard. As if she hasn't gotten enough praise tonight, I would like to commend Nancy and the Letha Village Nature Group. On February 27th, they put on a native plant presentation, which was incredible, and by the way, co-presented by another Letha Village resident, Reed Bosky, with his business partner, Adam. It was wildly informative, but also, and perhaps even more, I thought it was an extraordinary display of community, so thank you for doing that. And by saying that, I mean, not only was it a very large turnout, but I thought there was a very general and warm sense of fraternity, so thank you for putting that on. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard?
My name is Donna Wallace.
My name is Donna Wallace. I have a business called Wallace Financial. I'm right across the street, on the other side of 696. And I'm a retirement planner. So I just wanted to let people know that I'm here in Lathrop. I don't charge for any consultation. The difference between a financial planner and a retirement planner is that we do things, we keep you safe. There's like something called the rule of one-hundreds. So you subtract your age. If you're 70, you shouldn't have more than 30% of your money at market risk. And we all know how crazy the market has been the last few days. So it's a very special practice. And I minimize taxes, maximize social security. I have software. I can run all kinds of reports to show you how long your money will last in retirement. And I'm free. So I just wanted to, you know, I've been here since 2013. And most, I probably have a handful of clients that actually live in Lathrop. So I do a lot of work with the auto workers, General Motors, and that kind of thing. So I just wanted to get the word out that, you know, my services, I don't have any consultation fees. I found out about 10 years ago, 97% of people that enter retirement don't talk to a planner. And they just make these decisions. Sometimes they're very bad decisions. I've talked to so many people that really lost a lot of money just before they were going to retire in 2008. And so I just try to educate people as best as I can, you know, and just maximize whatever benefits you have available. But, so Austin asked me just to kind of come and talk, just to let people know that I'm available.
Could you give your address and the name of your business?
Sure. It's Wallace Financial. It's 26641 Southfield Road. And I'm, where Allstate used to be, I was right next door.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that would like to be heard? Come on up.
John Roberts, current resident of Lathrop Village for 46 years. Notice there's nobody here from the police department, but I did want to take the opportunity to thank them for putting on their event just two evenings ago, which I believe earned about $500, their annual chili tasting contest and so on. It was a good opportunity for people in the community to get together. I'm guessing there were about 50 people there. And for those kind of events, I encourage anyone here to come to those events. These people are the people that protect us, and they're going out of their way to try and do things to give to a local charity. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that wants to be heard? Want to come back around? Are you good?
I'll keep it short.
Okay.
So I brought up traffic speeds in the planning session, and you had asked that I give you some feedback of, you know, ideas. I'm going to turn it back to everybody else here. Is, I can't imagine people haven't noticed the increase in traffic speeds on residential streets. I'm not totally convinced that it's cut-through traffic. I think a lot of it may just be careless residents.
Absolutely.
And I, you know what? I don't mind if our police department cites careless residents. I'm on California Drive, which is not really a cut-through street. I'm on the other side, on the west side. And I've noticed a lot of pretty high-speed traffic there. Now, maybe that there's cut-through streets at either end of California Drive. I, if people have ideas of how to calm the traffic, I'd love them, you know, to give you guys some feedback on that. What, what can we do? I don't, I would imagine that cameras are not permitted in Michigan. In other words, they can't, you can't issue citations, something captured from a camera. And no front license plates doesn't help with that anyway. I don't think that the flashing signs to make you feel guilty do anything at all. So that, that's it. I would just love for people to give you feedback on how to, you know, how to calm the traffic. Because I see it. I just happen to have a good view up California Drive from my living room. When I'm sitting there watching TV, I see the traffic buzzing by. And I walk a lot, and I've almost been hit a couple of times. You know, people don't stop at stop signs. And I don't know what's going on with the mailboxes on the stop signs. They keep getting knocked over.
Wow. Thank you. Anyone else?
I do, I have two quick things.
Okay.
When the water, when people come in our neighborhoods to do work, we're not notified that the water is going to be shut off. Because twice, the water's been shut off. We haven't been notified that our water will be shut off. One, it was the day before Thanksgiving, the water was shut off.
What street again?
Excuse me?
What street again?
My street is Redwood Avenue.
Okay.
The second time was like a couple of weeks ago. We were getting ready for work and school. The water was shut off. It was never notified. They called me, and then I called her, I said, and then I got on the phone, and I think I called DTE or something. And then we was told that they're doing work in the neighborhood or something like that. But through the city, when they having people to come in to do work, I think we should be notified that our water is going to be shut off the day before. Some kind of way, we should be able to be notified. That's one. My other second problem is I have, when the city required that our sidewalks need to be fixed, when my sidewalk was fixed, where I had a problem after the fact that a portion of my sidewalk that was fixed, which I complained about it before, and I complained about it again. I sent an email to the city of Lathrop. And I indicated to them that I have a problem with the sidewalk, because it leaves a lot of water, and it leaves black ice. And I don't want to be sued for somebody coming walk on the sidewalk. And I was told that it was nothing can be done, because it's my responsibility. And that I addressed, like I said, with the city, and they told me it was nothing can be done. The year was up, and it was too bad. So sad. And I said, well, I don't agree with that. So that's my second problem.
Okay. Thank you.
And I like to say, you guys are doing a good job, and I appreciate you all.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to be heard?
Hi, Autumn Susannas, Lathrop. Excuse me, that's my old house, on Rainbow Drive. Just to mention, there are documents available to see on the Facebook site, the Lathrop Village Voice, where we honor free speech. And we try to be very, very careful to promote what's actually on the city website, documents. So you can see plans of what's happening for the Surnow project. You can see exactly what's going on. When we get a letter from the Southfield Fire Department that says we should open San Jose, you can read the actual language yourself. It's right there on the voice. I just want to mention, we have just renegotiated our police contract, and we hired a new police officer. I met him. He's very nice. I asked him, why are we not seeing patrol cars? Why are we not seeing our traffic that's speeding being addressed with actual parking, parked, you know, patrol officer? We just bought a brand-new police cruiser, $74,000, I think it was. And, and I hear you guys mentioning speed bumps, and I hear you guys talking about emergency access, emergency vehicles. And I just want to say, speed bumps slow down emergency vehicles. So it's sort of a, it's sort of a negating effect. Now, if you enforce speed limits with police, you don't need speed bumps. And the other thing is, what else do I want to say? I don't know. We're hearing, we're hearing a lot of, a lot of ideas, but what we, what we really need to be careful about is allowing our emergency vehicles to be slowed down just for the sake of not asking our policemen, who just got, you know, a raise basically from our new contract, to properly patrol and enforce our existing laws. And I really do hope that we do the right thing with San Jose when that motion is untabled. And they decide if they're going to put in a siren activated gate right from the get-go, as they should, so that we can have emergency vehicle access, or if they do what they said they were going to do in the study session, which is possibly clear the berm and allow traffic to come through, and then decide later what they're going to do. What that is, is opening us up to through traffic for construction traffic. That is what that document says on the, from the Southfield Fire Marshal. Anyway, I don't remember the marshal. Fire, it's Fire Department spoke about it. And, and we have a real problem with, also, I want to mention, our water flow. Our Southfield Fire Marshal did mention that we don't have enough flow in our fire hydrants to put out 50%, about 50% of the homes in Lathrop in danger of burning down because of the lack of proper water flow. Now, we, our promised money to fix our water infrastructure, $2 million is supposed to come our way. And I am worried, like John Terra said, we might not see that money. So anyway, we have issues. We do need access. We don't need through traffic, and we do need our speeds reduced. And I guess that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else want to be heard? So let's go to mayor and council comment first, which is, I hate to bring this up first, but our fire chief did retire. We went to his retirement a couple of weeks ago. The deputy chief is, actually, I think he was here, but he's only temporary. He's not going to be looking to be the next fire chief. There was a fundraiser for the.
LVMF.
Thank you. The Lathrop Village Music Festival. Well, she left, but I think it was a couple thousands of dollars. That was right.
That was a typo.
Oh, anyway, so they had a fundraiser for that, and that was really good. For, I'm going to go back room. For the through street for San Jose, that was the discussion during the study session, that the whole idea was not to leave the street open. It was discussion to have a gate. Hence the reason, that's why it's been tabled, because we need to have where, what we're going to do, because it's not going to be just open and willy-nilly. And side note, you, nothing that's tabled can just be.
It will remain on the agenda until it's taken off the table. So it'll appear on every subsequent meeting until it's addressed.
Thank you. For the comment about not being told about water being turned off, from experience, unfortunately, the city does try to go to everyone's house. Recently, last week, they just found out that there was a water main break on my street. And when I watched them go up and down the street, not everybody opened the door. Another thing that is unfortunate, that is my little gripe, is the fact that we don't know our neighbors, because we go straight into our garage, and we don't come to the front door to see. Some people. And I'll say, on my street. I was watching it. I watched. So sometimes, my point is, not so much that, is that sometimes it's a last-minute thing. The water main break, broke? Yeah. It was flowing for a while, and someone stopped and saw it, and that's why they had to turn the water off at that time. Planned water turn off, absolutely, we should be coming around and giving that.
Even when they're coming in and question, the city is going to know when they're going to do work, because they actually, this time of the day, the day before Thanksgiving, the water was shut off. They came in and did work on the street, on our street. No one was informed. No written notice, no knock on the door.
Okay. So that's one thing that we, of course, we're going to be.
How it happened with all the water back up in my wash machine with dirt and water, you know, how you washing.
Absolutely. That day, I had a meeting, and I could not take a shower before I had a meeting. But that's okay. So, but we'll look into that. And also, please don't leave. For Jonathan, you're absolutely right about the congressional spending. There was a mayor's meeting, and I was only, that's what I was trying to look up. They only addressed the state funding, saying that, well, it does say federal, but then it says state. It said, federal funding already received by the state has a better chance than funding that hasn't been received. So my question is, I don't think we've received our congressional funding, but you did send us something about that.
No. So congressional funding that he's referring to, yes, that is, that is held up by Congress right now, until they approve a full, full budget. Our South, Southfield water main is not there. We're going to keep preparing like we're going to get the funding, but unfortunately, we don't know if it's there yet. No matter what, it's not like they just write us a check. We just have to go through the EPA grant process. And it's a reimbursable project. So once they say the funding's there, still going to do the project and ask for the money back. Ask for the state, we haven't heard. It's still go, from last time I spoke with them, it's still going through their legal process. For them, we will essentially get the money once it clears, clears their state legal process, and then we can start doing projects with that.
Okay. I have a meeting tomorrow with Senator Alyssa Slotkin's office. So I will be also bringing up what you just asked. And I will also be in contact with Congresswoman tonight. The Historical Society. Have you talked to someone from the Historical Society? Have you actually approached them? Okay. So then, that's something that we can talk about, about it being open, which I believe it is an open.
No, it's not an open black wall for openness. I showed you the letter, and I told you the meeting in 2019, when they said they didn't care about the school, they didn't care about the street.
Did they really say that?
And they've honored somebody who was one of the people responsible for that, rather than the founders of the society or the founders of Lathrop. The net name is up on the wall, and they have an item of mine that they stole from me down there on display.
Okay, okay.
And I'd like to talk to Bill Beskey and the trees.
So regarding the plaque, if you would give Mike the actual name of the person that you're talking, the plaque that you're talking about, just, I'm just giving information out.
I've told you a few times. And I gave you a copy of the obituary.
Excuse me, excuse me. You give it to us in passing, when we're leaving out the hallway, and I have, I'm not going to, you know, go back and forth and accuse you for anything, but I'm saying officially, on camera, in the microphone, if you would give the name of the plaque, write it down and give it to our city manager. We'll look into it. And unless we know it's a fact, I highly doubt we threw it away, just because we don't care about history.
Well, to correct you, excuse me, Kelly, but I have given you the obituary.
It's not back and forth, Ms. Anderson. Diane, it's not, it's not back and forth. I'm just saying, this is what I'm asking you to do, so we can resolve it.
Yeah, okay, I'll give you yet another one.
If you would give it to us, we will look into it.
You're the dead later president that deserved to be honored.
Thank you. Y'all deserve to be honored, right? Okay. About the dead trees. I fully understand about the dead tree. My son has a tree outside. It died, and we had to get a new tree. So what happened is, is that we don't have enough staff to go around and water all the trees. So yes, I hope that with our new tree committee, they are going to be on it. And we're going to make sure that our trees are taken care of. That's a promise, right, Nancy?
Can I, can I say just one, ten seconds?
Please do it the mic, so that people on the video can hear.
Ten seconds.
My dad had a tree too, that was planted in his honor. And it was in that whole, that was supposed to be all the memorial. The problem, one of the major reasons that a lot of those trees died was because the trees that were selected were Canada choke cherries. And those trees get black knot disease. And I remember talking to Jeff Mueller, and I said, why are you planting this? This is like, he goes, well, you know, it's a nice native. And I said, but they get diseases, okay? And he, you know, Jeff really loved trees. He was one of the guys before, great guy, blah, blah, blah. We all know that. But you're better. But, okay. But anyway, those trees died because of disease. The majority of those trees died. It wasn't a watering thing. It was literally black knots. So just.
Thank you. I appreciate that information. Thank you.
It was, uh.
Thank you.
It wasn't water. The trees were living.
Thirty-nine seconds.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you. Oh, she already left. Thank you so much for coming and telling us about your business. That's wonderful. And I think that that's all that I, that's all I got right now. And I know.
I got a lot of stuff, since I was gone the last couple of meetings, and then we, we, timely point, we didn't, we didn't have time in the study session to get to council comments. I had a bunch of things I wanted to discuss there. In no particular order. So one of the, one of the top complaints I get, and I think it's, well, kind of mentioned tonight, was flooding, ditch flooding. I've been doing, walking door-to-door. I see a couple of you I talked to this week. And we get a lot of ditch flooding complaints, and a lot of people walk, immediately walk me out to their ditch to show me their complaints. And in 2020, we accepted the infrastructure study group's recommendation for the road project that we subsequently implemented. And as part of that project, we reconditioned the ditches associated with the seven miles of road, actually eight miles that we did. But the plan was also to address the other 18 miles. And what we had said we were going to do is to use code enforcement to identify the low-hanging fruit. Um, you know, the things that we can see that are open and obvious, like items in the culvert that are blocking flows of water, culverts that have heaved through the driveway that are preventing water from going back and forth. Um, and we've had kind of a revolving code enforcer issue, uh, but we, we're stable now. And so we really need to start that. I know we've talked about that and I'd, I'd really like to see. Again, I think some of these things are more easily identified when there's flooding. But even just in, in walking about on, on two different streets, I saw a dozen different things that were just obvious in terms of, you know, culverts coming through the driveway. Or there was one situation on a gravel driveway where the top half of the culvert is, is rusted out and there's jagged edges everywhere. I mean, that's something we can identify immediately. Um, and so the idea is, is if we can, if we can identify, it's not going to fix the, the issue, but it can help and it can help move some more of the water. So I'm hoping we can get Steve to, you know, as part of his daily rounds, just to kind of identify these things and use code enforcement the way we've done in the past. So. Um, the other question, one question I was going to ask at the session, what, what happened to the short-term rental? Did we, did we, did we make a decision on that? Did we?
No.
Were we going to talk about it more?
Yeah, we're going to talk about it more. Uh, naturally, the short-term rental conversation pivoted, started looking at the full rentals. So something Scott and I are working on. While we address short-term rentals, we're also going to just address our rental ordinance as a whole. Uh, because of one of the things that came up during that conversation was, how do we do inspections? And that kind of derailed things a little bit. So we're doing a bigger, bigger dive into that ordinance. So it's taking longer than we thought.
Okay. Um, and then at one of the meetings that I, I was, was not at, we talked about the fact that we got no responses or we received no responses for the RFQ for the two triangle properties. So I think we know that we've got a triangle property on the east side for the, that the DDA owns, one on the west side that we own. And the whole idea there was to get ideas, um, for things that we could do with that property, whether it's development or from, you know, residents to have ideas in terms of, um, you know, is it, we do a, a proposal for a park, a nature preserve, you know, recreation area. Um, and so I, I was kind of surprised to see that we didn't get, well, first of all, we got no response, no responses at all, right? And I was kind of surprised and disappointed to see that we didn't get any responses from residents because there was so much complaining, um, that we received in terms of emails, um, at the resident-led town hall, at, you know, online, social media. Um, and I was disappointed that we didn't get anything from residents suggesting what we can do with, with, with the, the spot to preserve it. Because people wanted the green space preserved. Um, and so, uh, that, that was kind of disappointing. It kind of underscored to me that especially in the days of, times of social media, you know, it's, it's real easy to complain about things, but it actually takes effort to make things happen. Um, and, you know, it's just putting this out there and that it's, it's not too late. I mean, we didn't get any responses, but if you've got an idea for turning it into a park and how we can, you know, sus- sus- I can't say that cock, sustainably turn it into a park, you can still fill out, you know, the, the form that was online. I don't know if it's still, is this still online?
No.
Or you could put together a proposal and send it to one of us or, or send it to Mike. Because I, I'd really like to see something happen with that, 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 uh, those properties. And if we have a way of sustainably making it better for the community, that would, that would be great. Um, another question that I was going to ask earlier, have we heard anything from Eagle with respect to the interior service line inspection? Did they approve our documentation?
Nothing regarding that large documentation. We actually just submitted our year, annual report last week, uh, where we mentioned everything we've done and as of right now, no additional feedback.
So no news is good news.
Yeah, that's the way myself and engineer are taking it. No news, good news.
Okay. And then this will go to, uh, a lot of the comments that were made tonight in the study session and here. Um, I didn't want to pull this out of the consent agenda, but I was looking at the, um, the citation report from, from the police department. And I kind of brought this up in the past many years ago. Um, so looking at February, there were seventy-two tickets that were written. Half of them, thirty-six were written by two officers, which basically means that for the remaining nine officers, they wrote four tickets in, in a month.
Each.
Each. Um, if you take, figure they probably have nine or ten shifts, that's less than a half a ticket a day. And I know they do lots of other things. They've got to make runs. They're doing community policing, uh, and, and so forth. But that seems really, really low to me. Um, especially considering, you know, what we're hearing from residents tonight, uh, as well as, you know, emails and what people are telling me on their front doorsteps about, you know, the, the cut through traffic, the running the stop signs, the, the speeding. Um, not to mention the fact that, you know, we, we lose out on revenue and talking about the Headley, you know, that's another way we can get, we can get revenue. It's not a lot of revenue, but, um, so is there a reason why we're not writing so many tickets?
I would have to check with chief because we'll have to look at the data because naturally there are times during the day that are worse than others. So that could be the reason why. Because if it's the same two people on the same shift, then we, then naturally the correlation is naturally that time of day is the worst. Um, so, yeah, that, that could be something we work out with chief.
Yeah. I just, just seems, seems really low to me. Um, uh, again, I want to congratulate the Lathrop Village Music Festival for the, for the fundraiser that they did and congratulate Amanda and Chief McKee and others who worked on the annual chili kickoff. That was, that was great. Um, another plug for the, the town hall, again, uh, April, Tuesday, April first at, at seven PM. And then just some responses to some of, some of the residents. Um, Jonathan, we're, we're very aware of the, the, the fact that we have, uh, water mains that, that are old. I mean, I don't remember the exact numbers, but before we started the, um, the water, capital improvement bond, uh, four years ago, I think it was something like seventy, high seventy percentages of our water mains were over a hundred years old, something like that. Um, they've been neglected. Um, they're designed for fifty years. So that's fifty years of, of neglect where we didn't make that a priority. So fixing that all at once, we just, we can't do it. I think Scott and I, we, we talked about it a few years ago. It was something like twenty million dollars and that was, what, three or four years ago?
We're fixing it ten feet at a time.
Right. Well, and, and, and that's part of the problem. I mean, it's more expensive.
I've only been here for two years, so I have limited experience, but it seems it's increased this year.
Yeah. And, and, uh, you know, we, um, we put in something, I think, like sixteen thousand feet in the last, something, something close to that in the, in the last five, five years or so. So we're, we're doing it as fast as we can. Um, but it, it's, it's a huge project and it's, and it's just going to take time. Um, and then kind of related to that, um, it was, there was a comment made, uh, I think it was by Ms. Susanis about the fact that we can't put out fires. Um, that's not the case. Uh, our city engineer has repeat, repeatedly told us that we do have the adequate flow. And in fact, with respect to the fire that happened in, in La Crosse, um, the, uh, uh, fire chief, uh, indicated that the hydrants worked well for the two hose lines. Uh, and then they used the tanker truck, uh, to operate their deluge gun, which requires thirteen gallons, thirteen hundred gallons per minute, which even if we had all brand new, uh, water lines, we're not going to get thirteen hundred gallons per minute. Um, we do, again, we recognize the fact that, that the flow is not as optimal as we'd like it to be. Um, that's why we've arranged to have a tanker truck dispatched every time there's a fire. Um, so if the deluge gun is necessary, um, it's there. And then we're doing other things. We, we have, hopefully, uh, I want to say any day now, but I know that's not the case. But hopefully in the next month or so, um, we're going to have the second Saquaw, uh, water source meter online, which will give us now two meters coming into the city, which should also, uh, help to increase flow. Uh, so every, every bit helps, but, um, you know, the, 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 the Village Voice that, that she advertises, you know, factual information, you're not. I mean, it's, we can put out fires. Um, so residents can, can, can sleep easy on that one. Um, regarding your sidewalk, um, so the sidewalk program was designed to make the, the sidewalks safe from, from tripping and, and those, those kinds of accidents. Um, unfortunately, the way that the sidewalks were designed in the city is you, from your house to the sidewalk, it slopes down. So the water goes to the sidewalk. And then in, in many cases, the, the ditches also can contribute to that if they, if they're not properly maintained. So they're at the lowest point, so they, they, they do pond up with water. It's, it's a citywide problem. Um, and there's no way we, the, the sidewalk program was not designed to, to fix that. We would have had to regrade all the front lawns and raise up the, the sidewalks, which again, would have been millions and millions of dollars. So it was really a, a, a safety issue. Um, so there's, there's not, I mean, I, I know they told you there's not a lot we can do about it. There, there, there really isn't. There are some strategies that you can do to mitigate that. Like a lot of people will take, uh, kind of dig a channel from their sidewalk to their ditch so that the water has a place to go. Um, so that is something you might try.
But if it's leveled, if it's leveled out right, like the rest of the sidewalk, it wouldn't be a problem. But see, you got to fix it right first for, in order for it to be, be done right. It wasn't fixed right.
I'd have, I'd have to see the particular sidewalk, but in, in general, the problem is, is if the sidewalks are the lowest point.
Right. You can't have it where it's sloped down to where water is going to sit.
Well, and that's, that's the point. I mean, the sidewalk program, sidewalk replacement program was not designed to fix that problem. It was designed to make this, them safe to walk on.
The sidewalk that they fixed, they did it right. But just that one part, they didn't do right.
Okay. Um, sidewalk fires. I think that was all, as if that wasn't enough. You guys?
Uh, I just want to kind of, uh, jump on the bandwagon of thanking the music festival and the police department and the nature group um, for all the great events that have been going on lately. It really is heartening to see people coming together, uh, to build community. And, uh, we need more of that. So thanks to everybody that does that. Uh, I happen to have office hours scheduled in April. Um, I'll keep bringing this up in council meetings until the date, but it is April twenty-fourth at four PM. I'll be in the, uh, conference room right here next to the council chambers. And I hope to see as many residences are interested in having a one-on-one conversation with me as possible at that event.
Um, I do have a couple of comments. So we, I just received an email from a resident. Um, they mentioned, uh, about the, the two triangles, um, after your council comments. Um, they asked, could they be pointing in the right direction to, um, I guess, make a proposal?
Can we just, can we put the, the document back on?
I, I would say have them, yeah, contact me directly because the document was very...
I forwarded it to them.
Yep. Yeah. Contact me via email because the document was very specific regarding
Right.
the RFQ process. So I can actually share with them and then provide them some updates from that.
Yeah, I just wanted to read it since, like, we just got it. So might as well, since we're on camera. Um, and then also I was going to say, I know we've been talking about, um, town halls and a lot of residents mentioned, uh, the speed, speeding. Um, and then we also asked for their feedback. And he said, let's ask some other residents for feedback. So maybe that could be a topic for one of our study sessions over, um, town halls. And then, I think you covered that. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to apologize for my lateness. Uh, I was putting out a small, uh, not literal fire at my house. So my apologies. Don't think I missed too much though. Um, as usual, yay parks, go ref. And for Diane, um, as far as I'm aware, I'm, I'm not sure why the picture had taken down.
It's a plaque.
Why the plaque got, sorry, why the plaque got taken down. Uh, it's nothing I voted on, nothing I was alerted to, but I know if, uh, you let Mike know, I believe that's what Mayor Garrett said, then we should be able to move forward. Um, and you also, something you said stuck with me about your, um, I don't know if dislike was the word you used, but your dislike of people's not caring about history. And you, I know you specifically brought up the timeframes of the forties, fifties and sixties. And I can, I know there's a lot of people that probably not excited about that timeframe and about the city in that timeframe. And I understand that that is your, your opinion, but I just wanted to let you know that there may be some reasons why some people don't care about that period of time.
Not care about.
Uh, some people weren't as excited about that period of time. And I'm not, I don't think that was related to the plaque, but I just wanted you to be aware.
Anything else?
Nope.
You say things so eloquently. Now I'm like, ah. Um...
It's because I go last.
Maybe I should start going last is what you're saying.
No.
Uh, anyway, is there anything else for the good of the cause? It is Saint Patrick's Day. Um, it's not Thanksgiving. This is actually for my sorority and not for, uh, Saint Patrick's Day. I'm not do that. Uh, is there anything else? Anyone? I take, oh.
Can I say one thing?
Nope. Go ahead.
Shout out to... Shout out to Jason Hammond for being the first on the council to donate, uh, to the, uh, to the shave-a-thon. Uh, he beat all of you to the punch and he gets bragging rights towards everyone.
It's coming.
But he also said that he will shave his beard for a thousand dollars. So just let me go home and ponder this for a second.
I will sign up the form. I will be part of the fundraiser.
I'm not a fan of beards, but anyway. Guess I will make a motion for, um, adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second, third.
Thank you. We adjourn.